January 6, 2021, it's 7:01 PM. And I am calling this meeting of the Lennox zoning board of appeals to order. Present tonight are Ned Douglas, Cliff Snyder, Kimberly Duval, Sean Larry Konstantin and myself, Robert Fuster Jr., the chairman of the board. Which is, let's do 75 Teconic Avenue first. Can you read that, please?
Let me get the notice and I will read it into the record. One second. Notice is hereby given that the Lennox zoning board of appeals will hear a petition for a special permit from section 5.3.3 non-conforming structures and 5.3.5 non-conforming single-family and two-family residential structures of the Lennox zoning bylaw for the property at 75 Teconic Ave, owned by Andrea Pignotelli in the R15 zoning district map 47 parcel 43 on January 6, 2021 at 7:00 PM via Zoom. The special permit is for the removal of existing one-story sunroom and construction of a two-story addition with full foundation within the front yard setback, as well as additional length added to existing rear deck.
Okay. So that being said, I will turn this over to the petitioner. So please go ahead and make your presentation.
Hi, everybody. I'm Cam Brown from Hill Engineers and I'm representing Andrea and John. I'm gonna let them talk a little bit.
Where are you from? Say that again.
Hill Engineering in Dalton.
Can you just spell that? Because it's coming through kind of fuzzy.
No, I'm sorry. Hill Engineering, H-I-L-L. In Dalton, Mass. And I'm representing Andrea and John and we put together this special permit application for an addition. It's going to be a two-story addition, removing their front, their sunroom. They're currently on a corner lot between Teconic Ave and Old Street. And they are looking to remove the existing sunroom with a new foundation. Is this going that well, guys? Can you hear me? I'm sorry.
Yeah, I had, there was background noise. I had to mute someone.
Yeah, I'm just gonna ask hold on one second. I have too much background noise here. I need to go with pair of headphones. And I'm gonna ask everybody who's not presenting and on the board to mute yourself. Just give me one second, please.
Yep.
Also, Cam, I have everything pulled up on my computer. If you need me to share, I can give you share access. It doesn't matter if the board has questions, but you, I will change the settings so you have the ability to share if you want to, if they have questions specific to what was submitted.
Okay, perfect. All set?
Yes, go ahead, please. Thank you.
No problem. So their petition is for the two-story addition, which we propose it not to be more detrimental to the neighborhood. There's multiple houses there already that aren't conforming with their setbacks and so I'll let them, Andrea and John, that is, talk to about why they want to do the addition. So they can take it over for a second.
Current footprint of the property has been renovated or touched since I think 1940s is when Andrew's parents have done anything to the property. But Andrew and I, moving up here, both work at home and now we need to, we kind of need the extra space so we can build home offices because as you know, in the current environment, there's a lot of work that needs to be done at home. So now we, we need to make some room to have two kind of offices so we can both work from home. Andrew definitely works full-time from home. Myself, at least, you know, half, half the time at home. So that's essentially why we're asking for the addition.
And another thing to add to is that sunroom that we're looking to remove, it really needs, it needs some work to it. The, you know, the stairs are kind of falling apart, the windows leak. I mean, it's an older sunroom. It's something that, an improvement that my parents were planning to make and didn't have the chance to unfortunately before they both passed. But it's something that, you know, we'd like to do to, you know, improve the quality of the house and living space.
Okay, could you tell us something about the lot itself? Why the sunroom or why this addition cannot be built within, outside of the setback, that kind of thing?
So the existing sunroom is already non-conforming on their lot. And it's unheated and the structure's not very good underneath it. The piers are collapsing. So we would be doing a total rebuild. And it's only seven feet deep, so it really doesn't cater too well to having their office space in it. Again, it's, it's older construction and it wouldn't be up today's, to today's current codes either. If we were to add a second story on above it, the, the foundation wouldn't hold it. So we are proposing the existing addition with seven feet and this addition is going to be 12 feet. So we're encroaching by another five feet plus the stairwell that they need to get down to grade.
How far out with the stairwell stick?
We did a four, three and a half foot landing, four and a half foot landing, I'm sorry. So from property line to that stair landing, stair platform, it would be 21 feet from the property line. Which if it was in a corner lot, it would be in the side setback requirements. But since it's a corner lot, that's why we're here.
Okay, we'll repeat that. It's corner lot, so that's why it's, it's not a side setback.
Just looking, and the side setback is usually 20 feet for any lot, but a corner lot, it's using both front yard setbacks. So I just wanted to mention that. That's why we're here, because we're on the corner lot. If we were on a regular lot, it would comply. And we are, we will not be changing the setback on the Teconic Ave street side. That will maintain the same dimension. It's just front Old Street.
Okay, and you're also seeking to increase the length of the back deck?
Yes, but that's not, it doesn't, that's not within the setback. I just put that in there so that you guys would know the other exterior alterations that were happening.
Okay, so that's not part of the special permit?
No.
Yes, when I was reviewing the petition, I was wondering why that was in there.
Yeah, I just added it, sorry.
No, that's okay. It's, it's good for us to know the full scope of the project. That's not a problem.
I just didn't want to have an issue come up later because they were adding to the deck and it wasn't our permit, even if it didn't have to be.
It's never a bad thing to let us know the full scope.
Yeah.
Okay, does that conclude your presentation?
Yeah, unless anyone has any questions at all for me.
Does any on the board of, anybody on the board of questions?
No.
No?
No.
No, okay. Okay, so then I would ask, is there any correspondence?
There's none. Wait, wait, no, no, none.
Okay. So open the floor to public comment. Is anybody from the public here to speak on this? Going once? Twice? Okay, no public comment. Okay, so does anybody on the board feel the need for a site visit?
No.
No. No.
Okay. So that being said, do we have a motion to adjourn the public hearing?
So moved.
Do we have a second to that? Okay, so for the petitioners, at this point, there's been motions made to adjourn the public hearing, seconded. At this point, you can choose to go forward or you can withdraw your petition. If you choose to go forward and your petition is denied, you cannot come before the board with a substantially similar petition for the next two years. Do you wish to go forward?
So are we, we aren't approved? Is that what you're saying? I'm sorry.
No, we, we haven't got to the decision phase yet. We have closed, we have closed the public hearing phase. And we're about to open the decision, decision phase. Before we get to that part, you have the option, though, of going forward or withdrawing your hearing. We give this option to everybody. If you choose to go forward, that's not a problem. If you choose to withdraw, you may do so. If you go forward, I just have to inform you that if you go forward and are denied, then you cannot come to before the board the substantially similar proposal within the next two years.
Okay, we choose to go forward.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Do we have a motion to grant the petition?
I move that the zoning board grant the petitioners request for a special permit under sections 5.3.5 and 6.3, right, of the zoning bylaw.
Yeah.
Second.
I, I had 5.3.3 and 5.3.5.
0.3.5, yeah.
Okay, sorry, okay. Sorry.
Okay, and sorry, who seconded that?
Kimberly.
Okay. Okay, so now we will discuss it. Would anybody like to begin?
I'll begin.
Okay.
I'm familiar with this property and I understand the issues of having a corner lot. This is, you know, close to downtown, very residential neighborhood. Not a whole lot of space in the backyard. It also, I think, makes a lot of sense to have this in, in the front, in place of the sunroom. The sunroom looks like it might have been an add-on at one point anyway. And this will make it more, you know, maybe, maybe appear to be more part of the house. And, and interior, in, in terms of interior space, certainly more workable for the time we live in, which is a world of working at home. So I would support this here, support this petition. I think it meets all the requirements for a special permit. And I think that we don't have to have any, I mean, I would not support any conditions unless, you know, someone proposes one that I agree with, but I don't see a need for any conditions.
Kimberly?
I agree with Sean. I mean, I think that, I hope, I hope you guys, just personally, I hope you guys do a nice job kind of integrating the outside with the 1900 structure, but that would be nice to see, but that's your prerogative. It's your house. I think also I hope that you go before the historic commission, just in terms of their demolition bylaw, that that's outside of the scope of this. But I know that the property is supposed to be 1900 vintage, so I think you do have to let them know through the demolition, the, the, let's see who will do it, the building department will do it. And then I saw the views, which was really helpful, just to understand the massing and everything else. And I think it's solid. You guys need it and it makes a lot more sense than the porch that's there now. So I wish you the best of luck.
Thank you. Cliff?
He's very, I'm mute.
Can you hear me?
Yes, you're off of you now.
Okay, I'm so tech, I'm so techie now. I agree with what's been said. I think the addition will be beneficial for the petitioners and I don't think it'll have any, create any problem for the neighborhood. So I'm in favor of the petition.
Thank you. Ned?
I, I agree with what's been said and I think this would be a huge improvement on what, what's there. And I, I'm glad that they, they thought to do it this way.
Thank you. I agree with what's already been said. And I just want to further point out, although we stated briefly earlier, this is a neighborhood full of non-conforming lots. And, you know, this is definitely, the further non-conforming with it, that is on a corner lot, it was pointed out, if it wasn't a corner lot, they wouldn't even have to be before us. I, I think it's definitely going to be an improvement to take down a falling apart sunroom and put up the addition. So I would be in favor of this. So that being said, it's been moved and seconded to approve the petition. So all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, so the petition has been approved on a vote of five to nothing. So congratulations. A decision will be filed within 14 days from today. After that, there'll be a 20-day appeal period. Once that appeal period runs, you have to pick up a certified copy from the, the town clerk's office and file it with the registry of deeds in Pittsfield. Although right now, I think it'll be done virtually, so they'll have to do it online. Any questions about that?
No, that sounds great. Thank you.
Okay, and do we have any volunteers to write the decision?
I can write this.
Thank you, Ned.
Can I just want to add one thing, Rob?
Of course.
With respect to the registry of deeds, actually, because I have to go a lot. It's not all virtual right now.
Oh, good.
But you have to, you go and then you call the number that's on the door and they'll come down and they'll pick up your document and they'll, they'll either mail it to you or you can pick it up later. So you don't
Well, thank you. I'm very glad it was to, I'm very glad to be stand corrected on that because when I was doing some personal real estate matters in the beginning of the summer, yeah, it was all being done virtually at that point, so.
And it's hard to do it virtually.
Yes, so I am very, very happy to be corrected on that. But in any event, you have to record it with the registry of deeds, which is in Pittsfield because that, that covers Lenox. So thank you very much for that and your, your hearing is now concluded unless you have any questions for us.
Oh, thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you for everyone's time. Appreciate it.
You're welcome. Have a nice night.
No questions. Thank you very much, everybody. Have a great night.
Thank you.
Thanks, everyone.
Thanks.
Okay, so the, moving along, the next petition is the one at 21 Shermohorn Park, which I will ask Jess to read, please.
Make sure I have the right one. Yep. Notice is hereby given that the Lennox zoning board of appeals will hear a petition for a special permit from section 5.3.3 non-conforming structures of the Lenox zoning bylaw for the property at 21 Shermohorn Park, owned by Christian and L. Deckert in the R1A zoning district map 40 parcel 52 on January 6, 2021 at 7:00 PM via Zoom. The special permit is for the construction of a deck on the southern side of the home, which will encroach four feet into the rear setback. Login information is available on the website.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so before we get into this hearing, I will point out that we did receive a piece of correspondence today recommending a site visit. And after re-reviewing the, the petition, the submissions and the request for a site visit, I will be requesting a site visit for this property. So I've just giving everybody, this is no way, in, in no way, shape or form does this indicate my having any preconceived decision or, or anything about this, but I do want to have a site visit and, and see the site staked out as requested and we will get into that later, but just to give everybody a heads up, this will not be continued, completed tonight because I do want to have a site visit. That being said, for the record, present for the board tonight is Cliff Snyder, Ned Douglas, Kimberly Duval, Sean Larry Konstantin and myself, Robert Fuster Jr., the chairman of the board. And I am going to turn this over to the petitioner for the presentation.
Good evening. I'm Christian Licker and I'm here with my wife and my family. I wanted to build this deck on the south side of the house. I went for the building permit. Everything was fine. He asked for a plot plan, which I provided. I measured from the set, from the property line to the deck. And this is where this came up that we are like about four feet into the setback. I had called a survey company to really draw it out for us. And I made actually a little, on the survey, I put the corner of the deck. So the deck is going on this side of the house. And you can see this is the setback line here, the dotted line. And there's about that little section that I marked red, that will be within the setback. So here's another.
Have you filed that with the, with the town?
I, yeah, I sent Jess all the documentation that I have, the photos, plot plans, the survey map I had done.
Okay, it's just, you're, you're a little square on my screen, so I just couldn't tell if that's one of the ones I've already reviewed or not. So just make
Well, I'm sorry. Yeah, this is a real survey map here. And I submitted this as a PDF
Okay.
to, to Jess.
Yeah, that's one of the ones that I had sent over with the two PDFs with the application and then the survey was by itself in a PDF, I believe.
Yeah, just making, just making sure for the record.
Yep, actually, the only thing that wasn't super clear, though, was when you, when here's showing the small triangle of where you're actually encroaching, that information's really helpful, but it's not on the version that we got. It, it's a little tougher to tell. It only shows the piers.
So, so I don't know if you have this in front of you. You see on the survey, you see actually the posts for the deck. And where there's a post here, there's a post there, there's a post here, and then there's a post here. And that will be the corner of the deck. And I just, just now, just filled this in in red. So to give an idea of this is what we are talking about, this little section.
Very helpful. Yep.
Okay, that's all I did.
Is it?
On the picture, so it would look like, would like this right here, this section right there.
Would it be possible to get copies of the, those documents with your drawings on there to the board between now and the, the next hearing, just so we could have that as well? Because I, I too found that very helpful.
Okay. Yeah, that's no problem. Together with what I sent you already, I also sent a letter of the neighbor that is closest to it, which is right in the back. And they, they supported the petition. And I think that, that's, that's all we're trying to accomplish. Just build this deck, make it nice and square. And, yeah.
So is this a back deck, a side deck? I'm unclear where the deck is in that picture.
No, you can't, you can't see this all dark, but so.
Thank you, though, yeah.
So let me picture here.
It's behind us in the curtains right here.
You actually have a set of doors that already opens. If you went out the door, you'd fall out.
So we are sitting right behind these doors. You can see the road. This is the front of the house right here. This is the road. This is the, the side yard and then the backyard is over here. From this person over here, I have that letter.
Yep.
So he's the closest to that little triangle. And then there's another neighbor, Sue Hoffman is down here.
Okay.
So where's the deck? Can you point to like the location of where the deck would be?
Oh, basically, I, I put it in this photograph, I put it in red. So this is the deck. It goes basically above this garage entry all the way across. So on the back, it will be maybe like a foot and a half above ground. So kind of where this triangle is, it's, it's, yeah, it's maybe two feet at the most elevated.
Could you maybe like push it closer to the camera?
Okay, I'm sorry. I, I did submit this.
Huh.
So that would be the back of the house?
Well, it's a triangular, it's a triangular lot.
Okay.
So it is the side, it is kind of the side, but then this is the back here, where we're talking the four feet right here. This is the back.
Oh, okay, okay. Thank you.
Let me see if I have a better oh, yeah, wait a minute, here. There's a, on the survey, we have a little locust. So this is our lot. So the house is here and the deck is here in the back. So this is the, the neighbor that I got the, the, the letter from. So the deck will be peeking out in the back right there where the tip of my penis.
Okay.
Can I just ask a couple of questions?
Please, please.
So Christian, are you saying that if you chop off that red triangle, that this will be completely conforming to the bylaw?
It would, yeah.
Okay, so did you think about chopping off the triangle?
It will aesthetically not look right.
It's not, it's not that much bigger.
Yeah. Okay, my second question is what is, it looks like there's something where the deck is right now.
It's just gravel, stone. We, it was kind of a very messy site. There were like dead bushes. Actually, one we, we moved that was right next to the house. We moved this one over here. And then when I had the people here, we, we just graded it and put the gravel stone on it. So it's basically prepped for, for, for a deck. So that's, that would be underneath the deck.
And the deck is going to be a foot and a half above that level?
Over here on that, on that corner. That's correct.
And how about over on the other side?
Well, over here, it's like above the garage door. So I think the garage was maybe eight feet. So it would be probably eight and a half feet in elevation over here. But all this part is all conforming. So, you know, when we filed the permit, you said everything is fine. You just need to call or find out about the setback here. He said the setback is 25 and you're in it four feet. So he said, I have to probably file with the ZBA and that's what I did.
Okay.
I have a question. How large is the deck?
I do have the measurements. Just a moment. So it's 42 feet long. And it is 11 feet wide. I don't know if you can see that. That is also something that I submitted.
So I well, I, so I did walk by there today just to check it out. I wasn't familiar with Shermohorn. So I, I'm not, I'm not going to participate in the site visit, but um, I did walk by and saw the way you guys had the, the lot laid out. I saw the trampoline in the back and I saw the, the pair of French doors where it, that would open out onto that deck. So, you know, I mean, I, I think, you know, just, just looking at it is pretty straightforward and the lots are a decent size on that street. There's not a ton of tree coverage, but, you know, I can, I can see where you're just, you know, it's pretty straightforward. You're coming out a certain distance, you're going back a certain distance. It, it's, you know, it's a very straightforward plan. So I did have a chance to, to look at that in person.
I think your children have something they want to say.
Chuckling, yeah, I think you're right. Where is Klaus Meyer's house in relation to this deck? Because one of the letters we received made mention of that. Maybe you could point that out on that lot picture you had before.
David's property, the brick house. Yeah, so let me, let me see.
First pull on a road.
Hold on, I'm gonna show it on a map.
Second house on the right. He's not, he's not close to us at all.
Yep, the lots are pretty large. The houses are definitely spread out.
I don't know if you can.
You can't see that.
Oh, you can't see it.
So if you walked down, if you came to Shermerhorn Park today, if you pulled onto Shermerhorn Park on the when you first pull on the right hand side, it's a little yellow Dutch gambrel. And then right after that is a, is a brick house. And this brick house is a nice, really beautiful large lot, and then it goes, then there's a wooded lot after that. And across from the wooded lot is, is our house.
Okay. So on this one, unfortunately, it's not in here, but and Dave, correct me if I'm wrong, but you're right, so our property is right here.
Yeah.
And David's property starts around where the mailboxes are right here, so his property is right here. He's actually, he has actually two lots. He has a wooded area that's right across from our house over here, basically. And then he has, and then his other property, his house where he lives is around where it says map.
Which is the Lyman Lane House?
Which is, I'm sorry?
Wayne Lyman House, which, which one, where would they be located?
Who?
The Limans.
Larry Lane.
Oh. Well, they're they're like right here where it says locusts.
For 21 Shermerhorn, so then it's 27 Shermerhorns to our right and across the street, we own 21 and 27. They're across from us on 27.
So Sue Lyman would live over here, would never see this deck. So our house is here, and then the deck would be on this side. And their house is over here.
Thank you.
If you need to see it, I have the GIS bigger, if any board members want me to share my screen.
Yes, please.
Okay, yep, give me one second.
Thank you very much, Jess.
Of course. All right, can you see what's happening?
Yes.
So they're right here, Alan, Christian, they're in 52 lot, or whatever, you know.
Yeah.
And then the Limans are.
Oh, yeah, Limans are over there.
And Larry Lane across the street, and then these two lots here, the one with the house, Klosmeyer. And then the next one is them as well, the wooded lot. So those two houses are across from this is the house we're talking about right now.
Okay.
And since we have that up, could, Jess, could you point to where the deck would be?
Yeah, give me one second.
Proposed deck.
The little garage bump out there?
Yep.
Yeah.
Would be, it starts right above it and then would go absolutely just the way she's showing it.
Yep, so it would just make this probably look, I mean, I'm no architect or builder. But from above, I'm thinking that, Christian, what you're saying is it's gonna go straight back and then
Yeah.
Like a rectangle, a long rectangle.
A rectangle versus like an octagon shape in the back.
And the garage is gonna stay, excuse me, and the garage will stay?
Yeah, nothing will change there, just the, just the roof will be a flat roof because the deck is on top of it.
And the neighbor who submitted the letter is, submitted an agreement is number 50, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
No, no, that's Alex. Sue Lyman is over, oh, what just happened?
We got three of them. One's climbing up the curtain right now.
Yes. We all know what that's like.
I had no idea.
Okay, so as I said before, we are going to request a site visit, and after that, you will be given the opportunity to present more, but are you finished with your presentation for now, or do you have more you want to add?
I am, unless somebody has questions.
Any questions on the board for now?
No.
Okay, so I notice there are people present, so I am going to first ask. I know there is some correspondence, so I would ask Jess to read the correspondence. I think there's only two pieces. One was submitted petitions, one came in, so if we could read the correspondence, that would be great.
Yep, I'll read them right now. So to who it may concern, we are the next door neighbors to Christian and Elle's property at 21 Shermerhorn Park, and our properties are but in our backyards closest to the location of the proposed deck. Christian explained to me in detail the location of the new structure, and we were in full support for the petition of Christian Decker and Elle Veleto Decker. Sincerely, I am gonna botch this last name, but I know the Lynn Schrubing. That's one.
Thank you.
Two. To the zoning board of appeals, I am Sue Lyman, and I live across the street from the subject property with my husband Larry Lane. We are unable to be at the ZBA hearing for the above matter on Wednesday, January 6th at 7:00 PM, so I am emailing you to outline our concerns. I do not think the proposed deck will affect us much, but I am concerned for the direct butters, Susan Hoffman and David Klosmeyer, whose privacy and property value may be negatively affected by the deck project. The subject property is perched on a knoll and a deck on the south side as proposed could seriously interfere with Susan Hoffman's quiet enjoyment of her backyard and be a visual and perhaps auditory infringement on the Klosmeyers. I have spoken with both Susan and Dave, and they have given me permission to include their concerns in this email. Mr. Klosmeyer rightly points out that all decks and similar structures in our neighborhood are located in the back of the house and tucked out of view from the street. There is legitimate concern that because the petitioners rent out this house in the summer, renters who have no investment in neighborly relations may have loud gatherings on the proposed deck. I respectfully request that the ZBA take a site visit and that the petitioner have the footprint of the deck staked out so that we are better able to visualize how intrusive this proposed deck may be, and whether proper screening may alleviate visual and auditory intrusions. Thank you for your consideration of this matter. Very truly yours, Susan Lyman and Larry Lane, 28 Shermerhorn Park.
Thank you. So I just want to open the floor to public comment, and I see several people here, so would anybody like to speak on this matter?
I'm Mary Jane Fromm. And I'm Mary Jane Fromm, and we are, my husband Gary and I are residents of Shermerhorn Park for about 45 years.
And what's your address, please?
32 Shermerhorn Park. We are next to the Lyman Lanes on the map.
Okay.
And I would agree with Susan Lyman that we will not potentially be impacted by this deck and, because we are above, but I am concerned about two things. And one is, of course, Mrs. Hoffman's privacy. The deck will be overlooking her backyard, which will give her no guarantee of privacy. And one of the things that has happened in our neighborhood, as Mr. Klaus Meyer said, and as Mrs. Sue Lyman said, there have been many additions to these houses in the 45 years we've been here, ourselves included. Every one of those additions has been to the back of the property. So we have a wonderful neighborhood, and that's why we're here, and that's why we hope to stay here. But we also feel one of the important things is the, you know, expectation of privacy. And, you know, that good fences make good neighbors, good privacy makes good neighbors. And then, you know, the issue of, you know, kind of how that will affect resale value for Mrs. Hoffman and for the Klausmeyers. The Klausmeyers do have, their houses not directly impacted by it, but the privacy, they have a lovely side yard that I often see them sitting out in, on, in the summer, and that would perhaps affect their privacy as well. Those are my two concerns for the overall character of the neighborhood. And my husband would agree as well.
Thank you. Mr. Klosmeyer?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, the biggest concern we have.
Just state your address for the record, please.
Yes, 8 Shermerhorn Park. The biggest concern we have is a visual impact. This, this will not only be visible as viewed from our home diagonally across the street. This is a sizable footprint, as you just heard, with a dimension that's half the footprint of this house. About 11 foot by 42 feet, that's 462 square feet of deck. So what are we talking about, a party site? We're very concerned because this is a being marketed as a rental site, and as I've been told, has been rented out for the summer already. So we know that the Deckers have been good neighbors. Young children, this vibrant family, we're glad to have them here. But the, those who come to visit are not coming here to just sit outside and play with their children, they're going to be out on that deck. And there'll be a substantial visual impact directly on a diagonal basis across from our property. The other concern is lighting, sound systems, fire pit. But also, Christian, as you mentioned, there's an eight-foot elevation difference on the front corner of the deck from the front of the property or from the street. And I want to make sure this doesn't become a storage area for debris. And therefore, if this is approved, I would request that there be screening, visual screening on the deck itself as it's constructed, so that we don't just look under a large deck and see what you said was a gravel, a gravel implant or preparation of the site. So I would like to be requesting that when the site visit is made, we place a priority on not only the dimensions of this and its visual impact, but also the visual impact of the underdeck. Where a lot of items have been stored at the end of that driveway before, where we all try to put our trash cans, whatever, whatever away. I just want to make sure this doesn't become a receptacle for storage that will be visually viewed by the public. Thank you.
Can we make?
I'd like to speak, I'd like to I'd like to speak also.
Okay.
I'm Sue Hoffman, I live at 15 Shermerhorn Park, right below this proposed deck, next door to Christian's driveway. It is up, we will see on the site meeting that it is up quite a distance, and the view into my yard is gonna be, you know, right there. He knew that he was going to ask for this deck apparently a year ago when he installed the French doors. And I'm surprised that he didn't get approval then before he went ahead and installed these French doors. But here we are a year later, and now he wants to put a big, a very big deck on.
Are we able to speak now? We installed those French doors in April.
There's a guy.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Didn't you install those French doors when you moved out of the house last December and had the whole, all the renovation done?
This is not a back and forth, please. This is a public meeting.
I agree.
Does anybody else want to comment? Okay, we, this is usually not a back and forth, but I have one question for the petitioners, and I'll ask them to give a brief response. Is this your year-round residence?
Yes, it is. And the part where we're renting it, this is where we live full-time. The big thing about this is the house we have next door, we use occasionally for short-term rental. That's why this house is coming. I live here full-time with all three of my children. And I go to bed at 9:00. I'm not much of a partyer, wouldn't worry about the parties.
So your house is not rented out for the summer?
No, sir.
Okay, and please respond.
I guess my, my thing is, is that my husband and I are such clean, courteous neighbors, and we've had such a great job at cleaning up all of our properties. And we're both in real estate, so we really understand what things should look like aesthetically. And we put so much care and time and love into our properties. We would never do anything that would be upsetting or unattractive. The deck will be for barbecues with my, my mom or my sister. Like I said, there's no large parties. And from, I, I, I guess I've just, we've never been messy, we've never left any trash or anything underneath. I don't know where all of that's coming from. I guess that's it, I guess.
Right, may I just ask a question? We are here in front of the ZBA talking about the four feet. The deck.
We're allowed to build a deck, right? Okay.
The deck is within within where it can do stuff, and, you know, we don't have the formal, but the approval, but the building inspector, we submitted all the plans, and he was fine. It was just about in the back, he said, I give you the permit if you reduce by four feet in the back of that little triangle. But I wanted to make it look right, so I said, you know, I'm gonna like go in front of the ZBA. So David, you should know that I'm not gonna have anything there that will upset you when you look at my house. I'm not sure.
So.
Coming from.
And the deck also is next to our neighbor's garage, not, not in her backyard either.
Also.
It's, it's really not.
She can't even see it from the house, she has a garage.
Well, listen, that, this is part of why we're doing the site visit.
Okay.
So you're absolutely correct in pointing out, if you cut four feet off this deck, you don't even need a special permit. However, if you go forward with a special permit, you know, the zoning board does. I'm not saying we will, but we do have, we do have the option if we approve a petition to put special conditions regarding screening, lighting, and that kind of thing. You've heard some concerns for your neighbors, maybe from the, for the first time. So you might want to have a conversation with them and just, you know, discuss what you plan on doing in terms of screening, lighting, that kind of thing, and you might be able to alleviate concerns.
But we're talking about the four feet over here, right? So this is like what we're talking about, and this is a concern.
Well.
That they have a concern with the whole deck, but like.
I'm just, I'm, listen, I'm just trying to help you out and suggest if, I don't know what the board, I don't know what I'm gonna decide, I know the board's gonna decide, but I'm saying if people raising concern saying, you know, I'm worried about seeing, you know, storage under the deck, maybe if you plant some shrubs around it or something, I, you know.
This is what I'm, so there's a garage here, there's a door, so you won't see any of it. Then there's a stone wall right here, so it's elevated, so and this will be screened out, there will be bars so that you can't see underneath it, but we're only talking like two feet right here.
Okay, well, sir.
Anything underneath it?
We'll see it at the site visit. I'm just, I'm hearing concerns, and I'm just trying to, I'm trying to play peacekeeper, and, you know, because oftentimes.
Okay, I understand.
You know, we've done many, many hearings where petitioners and butters get together and say, hey, we're gonna do this, this, and this, we agree to it, and then everything, a lot of the issues get resolved, so I'm just throwing it out there. It's up to you guys what you do.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, so has anybody else had anything they want to say for tonight? Okay, so then I would like to have a site visit, so what I would like to do is I'm gonna move that we schedule a site visit and that we continue this hearing to our next regularly scheduled meeting after the site visit. Do we have a second for that?
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi. Cliff?
Yes.
Okay, Kim, did you say hi?
Yep.
Okay, so Jess, can, when is our next meeting?
Inauguration day. The 20th.
Okay.
I can see Sean saying no, no. You're muted, Sean. You're muted.
It's okay, Sean's not available on the 20th.
No, it just would be nice to do it maybe just a different day that week if we could.
Well, do we already have anything scheduled for the 20th?
No, we have nothing scheduled for a while, so.
Okay, I did, I see another Mr. Hoffman raising his hand.
Yes, I'm sorry to raise my hand so late, I just, I thought.
Yes, I'm sorry to raise my hand so late. I just, I thought that it was said that the house was not a rental, and I just did some searching, and it looks like it is for rent on Berkshire Property Agents for July 2021. There's an ad posted.
Wait a minute, wait a minute. It is.
Yeah, I could share the link in the chat here.
So, and like.
So we're not renting it for a month. We have typically in the past, not this property, but our other properties.
I'm just reading what it says. It says $17,000.
We're not having arguments between each other. Excuse me, please. Jess, can you mute everybody, please? Thank you. Okay, so. We just heard this, let me clarify something. I'm going to ask the petitioners a question, so you can unmute them, please, Jess. I asked before if your house is a rent, if you rent out your house, the answer I was told was no. Now I'm told you have in the past, which is different from the answer you gave me.
Not this house, not this house. We own other properties. We own several properties. We have five properties, not the house.
So may I just, may I just say, you asked me if this house is rented for the summer? I said no.
Have you rented it out in the past?
We have rented it in the past for one month.
That house, this house, right?
Where we live, because.
21 Shermerhorn Park.
We go on vacation, and we rent it for one month.
Okay.
And so far, the only people, where he was a single woman, we only owned the house for three years. The first year we had a single woman, the second year, actually, nobody was here.
Okay.
We rented it once in three years for one month to a single.
Do you have plans on renting it out again in the future?
Not with COVID.
Okay, what about after COVID?
It's like.
We're not putting ourselves in a nail in a coffin out of the.
I'm just trying to understand the situation. I mean, people have a right to rent out their property. I'm just.
We all have the right to rent our properties, and this whole big thing of why this is all a big deal is because they don't like that we have our house next door rented short-term. That's why all our neighbors don't like us. That's why they're fighting over four feet per deck. That's why everyone's angry. And that's what this is all about. That's why it's upsetting.
That is clear. That is clear.
Very clear. That our neighbors hate us. We feel it. It feels horrible. We moved into this neighborhood. We love it here. And there's nothing worse than it feels like when you try to live someplace with your family to be attacked by your neighbors for no reason. And I'm walking away from the conversation now.
No, to be clear, I'm not attacking anybody. I'm just trying to fully understand the situation.
It is. So there's a little bit more background to why we are sitting here and why we have all these people, you know, have concerns.
Well, Robert, can I ask you, I mean, why is that? That shouldn't be part of this meeting. I mean, it sounds like there's some stuff going on in the neighborhood has, you know, not applies, doesn't apply to what they're asking for. Is there any way we can separate that just as, so we can move things forward?
Well, Kim, it only became part of the meeting because I asked the question, then I was just for information that was contrary to the answer I was given. So I'm trying to figure out exactly what the answer was, which has now been clarified.
I give you the correct answer.
It's been clarified. Thank you.
Can I just ask one question of Christian?
Yes, you can ask any question you want, Sean.
Is your, is this house for rent through Berkshire Property or agents or any other service for this coming summer at any time?
I think it may still show us, Mr. Hoffman said on the website, but we have no plans of renting this this year because we can't go anywhere.
Okay, but it's advertised.
It's advertised, yeah. But we still talk about the four feet for my deck, right? So we drifting from the subject here?
No, we're not drifting. Can I just say that to the extent you need permission to build your deck a certain way, because you want to do it that way, then this board has purview of taking a look at the project generally.
Which is fine, but like, you know, we talk about like this house being rented and advertised. I'm not really seeing the connection to the four feet I'm asking to build a square deck versus a little round deck there, which I just personally don't like the way it would look, so.
I think that the issue is that you said that you live next, or that you rent the house next door and that you live in this house, and you don't rent out this house. But it's advertised to be rented in the upcoming summer.
This house has been, can you please stop? This house has been on this website for the firm that it worked for the last three years. And now it's COVID, I just didn't take it off. But it's not rented. We don't have a renter for here. We're not looking to rent. My wife doesn't want to rent because we are not going anywhere.
That's this year.
This is this year.
How about next year?
Last year, we didn't rent it.
Robert, could I ask another question?
Yes, you may.
But it's.
Am I clear in my thinking that if they alter their plans for the deck and chop off that four feet, they could build it by right?
Yes.
And I may just have to do that, you know, but I was really trying to just make it look better. So otherwise, we're just gonna take off the four feet and.
Well, that's got a site visit scheduled. Can we, please?
Yes, please. I believe Sean had suggested, instead of having the meeting on the 20th, doing a different day that week. Although we have been trying to get out of specially scheduled meetings, I think that would be a good night, a good week, not to have a meeting on a regular night. That Monday is a holiday. I would recommend either Tuesday or Thursday of that week.
Which dates, dates are those?
It would be the 19th of the 21st.
What time of day are you thinking, Robert?
Oh, we're talking about for the meeting first.
Oh, I thought you wanted to site visit first.
Yeah.
Well, I'm hoping to get the meeting scheduled, then perhaps ask for a site visit that either earlier that day, if we could get it, you know, late afternoon, where you could be out of school and we still have some sunlight. Or if not, you know, a different day.
I'd rather just have a site visit and have a meeting and be done.
That's what I'm suggesting.
So then.
Is there a day that works better for you, Sean?
Any other day is fine.
I'm fine with any day, so somebody needs to just say, let's do it.
So. Ned, what time do you get out of school now? What does PC go to these days?
Well, we're on this block schedule, so this is actually, I can be free starting at 10:30 because of our block schedule. I only teach one block this period of time.
Okay.
So I. I can make it work.
Mr. Decker, do you, do you work from home? Do you work in an office? Where?
Oh, it's from my car. Yeah.
So.
I can't hear. I'm sorry. I'm speaking. I'm thinking. I'm thinking a second.
What if we do like lunchtime on January 19th with a meeting that night? Sean, would that work for you?
When you say lunchtime, can we do like 1:30?
Yeah, I mean, for me, lunchtime is flexible, so I'll ask at least anybody else. I can't. I don't know about anybody else, so.
Yeah.
I could do 1:30, Robert, and make it about 10, 15 minutes.
Yeah, it'll be, it'll be very brief.
Does that work for other members of the board?
No issue.
Cliff?
Yeah, I might actually be able to make that.
All right, so then we will do the site visit on January 19th at 1:30, and the hearing will be continued that evening at 7:00 PM.
May I ask who's coming for the site visit?
Well, the site visit is open to the public. It will be.
Okay, so anybody can pretty much attend?
Anybody can attend. I do, I want to remind everybody, this is a public hearing, even though it is by Zoom.
About with COVID, like too many people.
It is open to the public. The members of the board will come. Any of the public who wants to come will come. It is a site visit. We will not be discussing the matter. If the board has questions, we will ask them to be answered. But that is it. It is really just to view the site. And then the hearing will continue that night at 7:00.
It will be masked and socially distanced.
Yes, everybody will be masked and socially distanced. You know, anybody showed up without, showing up without a mask will be asked to leave. You know, the COVID guidelines will be restricted, will be respected. No one will have any need to enter your house. This is just to look at the area. We will ask you to have the area for the deck staked out, please.
Again.
We have to allow our neighbors onto our property.
It is a site visit is open to the public. You have to allow the public to come and view the site.
My husband and I need to talk about that. We need to talk about that before confirming with you. Because I don't feel, I feel hostile. I feel uncomfortable, and I don't know if I want them on my property.
Well, at this point, you have filed a petition with the board. The board has requested a site visit. If you refuse a site visit, you'll have to withdraw your petition. And that's your decision. Okay, but unless we hear differently from you, we'll be doing a site visit on January 19th at 1:30, and a continued hearing at 7:00 PM that night.
Okay.
Okay. And I just want to say before we entertain a motion to close the hearing, I'm sorry that you and your wife have found this hearing this evening so upsetting. I can assure you, it is not the intention of any member of the board to upset anybody. This is not, you know, questions and concerns raised are not a personal matter from anybody on the board, but we do have our, our jobs to do on behalf of the town, and we do have, when concerns come up, we do have an obligation to raise them. But there is nothing personal addressed towards anybody, whoever appears before us, nor is there anything prejudged from any of the questions we may ask. That being said, does anybody have a motion to adjourn for the evening?
I make a motion that we adjourn this meeting for. Is it adjourning or continuing?
Well, continuing, continuing the meeting for the site visit and the, for the dates we've already discussed.
That's exactly what I move.
Thank you. Second. All in favor?
Hi.
Hi. Thank you. Okay, then. Jess, unless you have any other business for us, minutes or anything, which I have not seen, then.
No, I don't have any minutes.
Okay, then I declare this meeting of the Lennox Zoning Board of Appeals closed for the evening. So everybody have a nice night.